You want to sign in?
Didn't know you had to.
If you're going, if you're going to talk on the public hearing, you do not have to.
I do not, okay.
But if you're, if you're here to, for citizens input at the end of our meeting,
Oh, alright.
You have to sign in.
The insurance changes, considering where's that fall?
The insurance?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a public hearing.
Benefit change.
You won't sign up for that.
Alright.
Because benefit change is not a public hearing.
Okay.
I'm Terry Graham, I'm the city clerk.
Hey Terry, I'm Emory Leonard.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Uh, yeah, I need to go back.
If there's an issue about the zoning, it's a public... Okay. No, 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 no.
I'll call this meeting to order on the 5th, 2015. I want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight, a good friend of mine, Pastor Shale Osmond of the Life Church Assembly of God, at 4100 King Springs Road. He's, he's on the front row, you're a good man for being on the front row. He's going to come forward, give our invocation and lead us in the place, the flag. So everyone, please rise.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Father, we look to you this evening, we ask for your guidance in every decision, every matter of business that will be presented this evening before the mayor and city council. Lord, I would pray first and foremost, that those decisions would bring glory and honor somehow to your name, and that secondarily, and also very importantly, they would be for the betterment of this great city. We thank you for all of your many blessings, and we ask all of these things in your great name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are, maybe neither town are looking for a change, or just want to go somewhere where it's happening, I've been to the church at 4100 King Springs, and you stay pretty busy over there, so, Shale, thank you so much. It's always been here to give our invocation, and I think he's also the chaplain for the Smyrna. That's right. Good deal, thank you, Shale. Agenda changes, we do not have any. Mayor report, I'll save that for later. Item 4 is land issues, zonings, and annexations. A, 2014-371, public hearing resounding request, Z14-24, resounding from R15, to RAD conditional for construction of a 36 lot subdivision, 12.12 acre tract, land lots 264, 265, 208, 216, and 220 Concord Road, DBB Enterprises LLC. Is the applicant here? Okay. Just want to make sure I'm going to get the background, and we'll go from there. I'm ready to go.
DBB Enterprises LLC is requesting this rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of a 36 lot subdivision, at a density of 2.97 units per acre, at 208, 216, and 220 Concord Road. This has gone to the planning and zoning board, and was approved, and staff is also recommending approval.
Okay, the applicant is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this rezoning request? Okay, for those that want to make a comment, I'm going to get y'all to come forward and be sworn in. Even if you decide you don't want to make a comment after you've heard everything, I still want to get you sworn in, so, anyone, including the applicant, is that correct, Scott? Need to come forward at this time. Anybody that wants to make any comment concerning this rezoning request needs to come forward. Don't be bashful. I feel absolutely, is that Mr. Ron Fennell's ward, Mr. Fennell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application's gone through the traditional process, and I'd like to ask Mr. Rusty Martin from our staff to give an update on how it's progressed through the process.
Good evening. As Ms. Howard presented, this is a rezoning request from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of a 36 lot subdivision. The PNZ heard this case back in November, and they made a recommendation for approval by a low of 7-0. This property is located at the intersection of Highview Drive and Concord Road. It's approximately 12 acres in size, and is located 4-7. Currently, there are three single-family residents on site. Two of those residents will be demolished, and one will remain and be renovated. This is the zoning vicinity map. As you can see, the property is zoned R15, the budding property to the east in Bennett Woods.
Hold on a second, Rusty, can everybody hear? There's a feedback up here. About that. Can you use the handout mic?
Okay, back to the rezoning case.
Disregard those first 10 minutes.
This, real quick, this property is located at the intersection of Highview Drive and Concord Road. There are three single-family residents on the property. Two of those residents will be demolished with this request, and one will remain and be rehabilitated. The zoning map shows the subject properties being R15, the adjoining property to the east in Bennett Woods is zoned R20, and the property across Concord Road, the portion that's in Smyrna, is zoned RAD, and the rest is in Cobb County, and zoned R20 in Cobb County. This is the future development map, the city's comprehensive plan. Under the future development map has this area classified as suburban residential, which caps density at three units per acre. As you can see, to the north, south, and east is all suburban residential as well, and Concord, Concord close across the street, has a moderate density residential land use classification. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, the main access to the site is off Concord Road, just south of Concord Approach Way. You come into the site, and then it tees and goes to two cul-de-sacs. Here's the proposed open space, and they're proposing a covered pavilion in that area. Here's the location of the proposed stormwater management facilities. I'd like to also tell you that there will be sidewalks throughout the subdivision, both inside and out, so there'll be sidewalks along Concord Road and Highview Drive. All these homes will face into the community, so those will be the backs of homes on Highview Drive, and the side of the homes on Concord Road. These are the proposed home elevations that were submitted with the zoning application. They're traditional-style, two-story homes. These are the pictures of the site today. The picture of the house in the left-hand lower corner is the house that will remain. The other properties will be demolished. Here's a picture of the adjacent property. These are just representations of what's around in the area, there's not to depict every property out there. Community Development has reviewed this request and recommends approval of rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for 36 single-family residences at a density of 2.97 units per acre, with the following conditions. I'm going to just summarize the standard conditions, because those are all, those are always applicable to every subdivision rezoning we do, and then I'll go into more depth on the, on the special conditions. Number one, the composition of the homes in the residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to brick, stone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. Number two, the developers shall provide a vegetated buffer with a minimum width of 20 feet, parallel to any right-of-way external to the development, and that applies, obviously, to Concord Road and Highview Drive. Number three, there shall be protective covenants with a mandatory HOA. Number four, the developers should provide at least 20, 200 square feet of common space per lot, in some sort of amenity feature. Number five, the detention retention facility shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside of the development. The stormwater detention plan should be designed to create at least a 10% reduction in a two-year to 100-year storm event. Number six, all utilities should be underground. Number seven, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number eight, a strip of brick pavers or stamped concrete shall be installed at the subdivision entrance. Number nine, the development of any streets shall conform to the city's standards for public rightaways. Number 10, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number 11, developers shall install decorative streetlights throughout the development. Number 12, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. 13, all landscape plans must be paired, stamped, and signed by a Georgia-registered landscape architect. 14, all yards and common areas are to be soweded. 15, all single-family and duplex residential lots shall provide either three 4-inch caliber trees, or three, or four 3-inch caliber trees, or three 4-inch caliber trees at time of CO, and then it lists a variety of species. Number 16, an archaeological study shall be provided prior to development. And now on the special conditions. Number 17, the development shall maintain the following setbacks, a front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of 5 feet, a street-side setback of 20, and a rear setback of 20. 18, the developers should provide, the development shall be developed with a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. 19, the proposed homes shall have a minimum floor area of 2,000 square feet. 20, all homes shall be accessed from the new proposed public roads within the subdivision. 21, the developers shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk with 2-foot grass buffer inside and outside subdivision, and the developers shall provide sidewalks along both Highview Drive and Concord Road. 22, the minimum driveway length should be 22 feet, and that should be from back of, back of sidewalk to a front face of the house. 23, the developers shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary for the provision of service to the community. 24, no stormwater management facility, or portion thereof, shall be located on any portion of the proposed lots. The stormwater management facility shall be, shall be solely located on HOA property. 25, the developers shall be responsible for the provision and dedication of any sanitary sewer easements for the connection to the city sanitary sewer system at time of final platting. 26, all trees within the limits of disturbance not located within a tree protection area must be removed during the land clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 27, approval of the rezoning shall be conditioned upon the site plan submitted and dated 11/5/2014, created by London Patterson Engineering and Support Services. And 28, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted and dated 9/15/2014. Any approval, any change to these elevations must be obtained from the community development director. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty, you mentioned sidewalks. There'll be sidewalks on Highview?
On both Highview and Concord Road.
And so there's not a sidewalk there now, right?
There's not one there.
So it'll go from where to where?
It'll end at the property line on Highview, and go back to Concord Road.
Any questions of, Mr. Martin? Hear from the applicant, or?
We'd like to hear from the applicant now, and then from members of the community, as this is a public hearing. Please fully introduce yourself, name, business, and address, please.
How y'all doing this evening?
Good.
My name is Douglas Brent Benson, and I live at 5452 Green Ridge Drive in Atlanta, Georgia. I've done, I'm currently in the process of doing one development in Smyrna, and like working with Eric and Rusty, and do what I say I'm going to do, and try to protect the community and do a quality development, and met Mr. Tackett, and have been going through the rezoning process, and Mr. Bacon, you asked that, where would that sidewalk go? I'll carry it all the way to Mason, if you want.
Manson Avenue.
Manson, yes sir. And put a handicap ramp there, so people can access that. The sewer will actually tie in, after I get with Scott, the sewer will tie in right there at the manhole, at Manson, so we'll be excavating the street somewhat right there anyway, so we'll just go ahead and continue the sidewalk right there.
I was just curious as to where it, where it was going to end at, because it's like a sidewalk to nowhere.
I'll have to get with the lady that owns that property and make, well, it'll be on the right-of-way, so it won't be a problem.
I had a question relative to the, the two big issues that people have brought to my attention, traffic and water management on the site.
Yes.
And I know you're working with our city engineer on the final version of how the water leaves the site.
Yes.
The two homeowners in each of the two areas behind the structures you're erecting to manage the water flow, tell me about the conversations with those homeowners, both, both places.
I had a neighborhood meeting after we had the hearing for the planning and zoning, and I went and met at Ms. Nix's house, and we walked her backyard, and she asked me if I'd take down a few trees here and there, and I told her I had to get a letter from her, you know, to do that, but it has natural drainage through there, and of course, if it needs any improvements, you know, I'll, I'll do that to make sure that there's no harm taken with any water that runs across our property.
Is Mrs. Nix and one other homeowner through which the bulk of the flow would go from that one large catchment?
Yes, sir.
And have you had a conversation about piping that water from that flow over across the street?
I think that we have overdesigned the pond enough, and Eric will, the city engineer and my engineer will get together on that, that we can reduce the flow even more than the 110%, so it'll be extremely less. And if we have to do water quality features, you know, and to treat it and slow it down even more, we will.
How about the other one over on the opposite side?
I don't remember their name, but they were at Ms. Nix's house.
Okay.
And I had the same conversation with them. Of cour, I didn't go to their house that day, but had the same conversation.
Okay. Are there other members of council, Mr. Welch?
Mr. Welch. Yes, sir, when you say there's a, there's natural drainage, is there some type of swale already?
Yes.
In both cases, or?
It's just an earthen swell that's allowing the water to get out of there. If it needs to be modified, I'd have to get permission from them.
And I guess what I'm saying, it's, it's existing in Mrs. Nix's backyard already, then. What about the case over on, I believe it's on Doe Skin?
I'm not sure, I didn't walk it and look at it, but that's a low area of Mr. Tackett's property now, so it would have to be drained in that way, but I haven't physically walked it and looked at it, but I will before it's over with.
Okay, thank you.
I think that final conversation we had, Mr.
And as far as the traffic goes, Eric and I have gotten together that we'll follow standard G-DOT practices.
Okay, you, you might have maybe misunderstood the line both of Mr. Welch and I were going for on the opposite end of the development, the smaller catchment basin around Doe Skin, because that one does flow differently away from the site towards that area, and I just wondered if those homeowners had talked to you.
Like I said, I think they were at Ms. Nix's house.
Okay.
I don't remember everybody's name, but if they haven't, I will have a conversation with them. I'll reach out to them.
Very good, okay.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you. We had one person, I think, that was sworn in, Haywood Savage. You want to come up and tell us who you are and any comments you'd like to make?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Haywood Savage. I live at 498 Willowbrook Drive, southeast Smyrna. I live at the very, very end of Willowbrook. We catch the blunt end of the drainage from where the subdivision begins, and the drainage that crosses Willowbrook due to the new subdivision and off of North Cooper Lake that now drains behind the Johnsons' property. It goes around the retaining wall that they were promised, and it crosses Willowbrook where Manson comes into Willowbrook. I have an SUV, and it's up to the little running boards there due to any heavy rain, and you can see debris in the roadway from up above, from the subdivision on. It's a natural flow from very, behind Ms. Nix's house. And I apologize, I was not here for the November meeting, I was out of town, and even today I was, and I rushed back for this. I sent a late email to Ron, not sure if he got it, but he and I sent it to also Allegra, who is part of our subdivision, she does fantastic job. But if y'all would like to, I have copies, I quickly did this afternoon. If anyone would like to observe, it's just too short on Sunday, before church, 9:00 AM roughly, and the water had receded a good bit, and I apologize, not getting out there that early. But it shows the pictures of the Johnsons' property, and how the water's coming around the new subdivision, and washed away the dirt away from the homes in the new subdivision, came around the, down a beautiful rocked drainage system that looks like I'm in Blue Ridge, Georgia, watching the cascades, and the water flowing real freely, goes under. They have quickly put up a pretty nice fence. I would like to see a nice wall, and then you could put some drains under each one for that. It's just an example of what's coming behind Ms. Nix's house. Now, sure, let them build a few houses up there, property owners have a right to sell the property and make a little profit. Two houses per acre is adequate, as long or less, as long as there's room for the sewers, playground, anything for people if they have children, pets, associate. But if, like the new subdivision that we have on us, there isn't anything for people, and they're already cutting through our property to walk their animals, which is great, but they're walking through our yards, and whoever comes down through there crosses the Johnsons', cuts up Mr., my driveway, and Mr. Lilly's driveway to get to the property behind us, which is the swim tennis area. So if y'all would like to, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If anyone would like to see the pictures, and I can get you plenty of more, that's quickly the way it was on Sunday. And that's my comments of personal living there, and also with your traffic flow and everything, it's already a high volume. I walk every morning, weather permitted, and people cutting through from Concord Road to get to the east-west connector, South Cobb Drive, where Publix is, it's very, very high for the neighborhood. And again, I thank the mayor and the council, and I'll try to answer anybody's questions if need be.
So Haywood, your concern is for the additional runoff that will happen, or you believe will happen as a result of what's going on in your, in your backyard?
Just viewing, just what's happened here.
Right.
And what's going on right now.
Right.
Due to a lot of promises, and I was at that meeting, and this super wall's supposed to take care of everything, and it has not. If anything, if you looked at Sunday's drainage, it's designed on Mr. Johnson's backyard to the right toward Mr. Lilly's, and the older subdivision and the new one, the drainage is actually turned so to come that way, and it'll never make a retaining area. It's a, it's a nice concept, good cut, and it even washed out their own property, and the fence. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions, Mr. Savage?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Savage, I'm just trying to make sure I understand where exactly you live. Do you live at Willowbrook and Manson, or Willowbrook on the, on the other end?
I'm on the very end where all the water comes to.
Away from Manson, then. You're talking about where the water comes from the new subdivision that's existing now, is that right?
Pardon?
Are you talking about where the water comes from, from the new subdivision?
Two parts. One, water coming from Willowbrook already, and the old subdivision. We get, you know, it depends on your normal rain to higher rain, and predicting with the weather people, we're supposed to get more rain, we're just at a starting point. Second part is Manson, Deadson, and Willowbrook on the very end. There's a culvert there, and it, water comes over that culvert right now. Take the right, over the hill, the Johnsons are to your left, and a couple others, but I'm dead center. but I'm dead center.
Okay. I, I understand now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, Wood, I apologize, I didn't get your email. I've looked at all my-
It was my fault. I was running late. My secretary didn't get my message, uh, cell service Blue Ridge today, but gas was a dollar ninety, and I filled it.
There you go. We're making progress.
We're making progress.
Dollar ninety? Where was that at?
At, uh, right downtown Blue Ridge.
A long way to drive to get gas, huh?
But they didn't, they didn't have us any fresh apples, so you're out apples.
But, but your concern, Haywood, is that you've got a lot of additional water runoff to be, now, and this is all gonna, from this-
It's, it's gonna get worse, and, and traffic, of course, will be worse.
Right.
And I, I do not oppose progress, and I appreciate the council and everything, the way Smyrna's going, but they overbuilt the one on, uh, my opinion, overbuilt, uh, on Cooper Lake. Too many houses per property, not enough, uh, area for the ground to saturate, drain into the, you know, just natural to go in. You can't, water won't go where pavement is, and, you know, it rolls, it doesn't go inward. And the same happened behind Ms. Nix's house.
Well, that was, that was two of my major concerns was the-
Too much water.
Well, there's, it, it, make sure that we do what's engineeringally is right to retain that water and, and the traffic. Um, you know, it's, it's 36 lots, we'll add more traffic, and, uh, and we talked about, uh, the traffic that we have no control over, right in West Cobb and Hyrum and Paulding County that-
That is true.
They come this way, so.
All we can do, do is more speed breakers on, uh, Highview, and the residents on Highview, I, I'm sure will oppose that, but-
I think a toll gate right when our city limits are.
With the children on Highview, it's dangerous. I mean, a delivery vehicle of some type, I guarantee forty-eight to fifty, you know, before you get to the bottom.
Yep.
Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you.
And when you get through, I'll get the pictures at the end.
Okay.
Actually, I'll pass them around. Thank you very much. Are y'all read through? That was quick. Nobody needed a explanation.
No, I, I didn't want to say. I want to make sure that, that, and if we can get-
And I tried to show, number one, as flowing from the new subdivision, coming down through the fence into the Johnsons' backyard, and it actually went over their sidewalk, but, uh, I, by the time I got out, and daybreak, so you could see what it was about, of course, it drained away from the sidewalk. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, you know, we have our city engineer here. He's very familiar with the, that whole watershed, uh, on both sides.
Been a lot of people working on that creek and even cleaning up the water and the waste that's came off of the hill, and I appreciate that, too, 'cause they had twenty-something people one day working that creek all the way behind the residents all down through there, 'cause it was a mess.
We need to make sure that if we, if our staff can get some of these, uh, if we get that, it'd be great.
I took sixty-four pay, uh, pay, uh, pictures, but time and not to just, you know, wear you out with pictures, but a picture's worth a thousand words.
Yeah. If you want to send them to the city email address, I'll be happy to-
Yeah. Those I gave you, and I can put some more together.
Okay. Thank you, Hayward.
Thank y'all for your time.
If, uh, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just because this issue of hydrology is an important one, I'd like our city engineer, because he knows this watershed, he knows the elements of, uh, both the stipulation on this project and the one being mentioned that O'Dwyer's also done in the community. If you could just speak to it just briefly and what, uh, the city is, uh, you know, making as a part of the conversation for these developers to understand impacts.
Certainly. Um, if I understand what you're looking, the, the question you're asking, um, our detention, excuse me, our detention requirements require reduction in the peak flow rate below, by ten percent below the existing flow rate of what flows to that point. Um, and I guess there's a couple of different issues here we're looking at. Uh, first off, for the issue in front of us, for this rezoning, uh, there are two ponds going in. I've had conversations with their engineer, uh, as well as Mr. Benson, on the, the concept, and I have a letter from him saying it will meet their requirements. And their requirements are over detaining to accommodate everything that flows to that point and releases it at a rate that does not cause adverse effects downstream. Without seeing more detail, it's premature for me to say whether what's laid out here will definitively work, but going on rules of thumb on volumes required for storage from when I used to do private development work, it appears that there is sufficient capacity for this area that's coming to it. Uh, for that, uh, for the pond adjacent to, I guess it's the pond to the east, I would normally look for about 5,000 square feet, excuse me, 5,000 cubic feet of volume per acre of area flowing to that. And I don't have the acreage broken down, but it's approximately nine acres, just ballparking it. It's about three-quarters of the site. From the letter I had from the engineer earlier, they're providing 80,000 cubic feet, where 45,000 would be required on that rule of thumb. And it's a similar ratio on the pond to the south. So on a preliminary look at it, I believe that has the sufficient capacity to slow it down. We'll suss this out during the design review, and we will be certain that there are no anticipated adverse effects downstream. Regarding the, the conditions that were just brought up, we've had ongoing conversations with the developer for the North Cooper Lake project, with the builder, and with the homeowners downstream, and she has my cell number on speed dial. Um, I got texts, texts from her and videos from her during this rainfall event, and it appears as though it was the intensity of the rain. We got about three hours of rain, three, three inches of rain in a six-hour period. That roughly correlates to about a 50-year event. So it's, it's an unusually intense event. Uh, similarly, last, this past May, the intensity of rain that we had bordered on a hundred-year event. It wasn't a full 24-hour-long event, but we got so much rain in a short period of time. So we are experiencing some very brief but intense rainfall that is causing some of the things that we're seeing. Uh, but I have worked closely with the Johnsons, I've worked closely with the builder, to try to get these issues resolved as we are seeing them happening. One of the challenges is, is the North Cooper Lake Place is a project that's currently in development, so it's in a state of transition, and the ultimate design conditions are not yet in place to accommodate and to direct the flow as it flows off. Does that, uh, provide sufficient information? Anybody else, any other thoughts?
Well, no, I mean, if, if you'll give these pictures back to Mr. Savage of it, but if you look at that top one, is that, um, you're saying once it's, everything's in, then it shouldn't do that? Or are you saying that because of the such, the intensity of the rain that happened so quick, I mean, what could have been done to, to prevent that from happening?
The, there's a couple of different things that are showing up in this particular instance. And what this is, what you're seeing on those top two images, is a low depressed area in the front of the Johnsons' property. As I understand, that actually used to be a pond. It used to be full, and they drained it, or it was drained. I don't understand, I don't recall what the, uh, why it was drained or how it was drained, but it used to be a pond that held water. Um, in the last three to four months, it appears to be draining much more slowly and holding more. The, behind three of the lots on the North Cooper Lake Place area, there is a, um, a stilling basin which is supposed to collect the heavy sediments, and in fact, it does. But the volumes of the rain that we've received exceed what the design capacity is for those. Those are designed for a lower storm event, so they had a whole lot more rain coming off. It overwhelmed that system. Um, and throughout the process, when something like this has happened, both the developer and the builder have taken effort, have taken steps to correct and clean up when something like this has happened.
But could something have been done before? Could something have been in place that if they did have this rain, that it would have taken care of it?
Initially, there was, and then when they started building the houses, those, those elements were removed to build the houses, and once the houses are in place-
Yep.
The roof gutters are all being directed to the street, so it will get over to the pond on the other side of the property that was mentioned, and that, that giant wall that they're talking about. So the answer is, what was in place to prevent this was taken out to build the houses, and when the houses are built, the water will flow in a different pattern.
I, I think I understand. It's, it's just hard for, for myself up here, is that when we assure the adjo- the adjoining property owners that the engineering is designed in a way where there will not be any additional water, it's gonna be put into, onto their property, and then boom, something like that happens.
And, and an ultimate build-out, that will be the case, and it's one of the transition things that we rely on the builders and the developers to be aware to mitigate these effects as they're building. And, uh, clearly, in this case, um, it doesn't appear that was done.
If you give us back to Mr. Savage, and then, uh-
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Savage was the only person that was sworn in.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, part of the public hearing is ready for conclusion, after which I'll be happy to make a motion.
Yes, sir. It's you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, based on what the, uh, staff and the Planning and Zoning Board has recommended with the 28 stipulations on the developer for this particular site, um, I move approval for, uh, rezoning request Z 14 dash zero 24, rezoning from R 15 to R I D conditional for the construction of a 36-lot subdivision, 12.12-acre tract, landlots 264 and 265, 208, 216, and 220 Concord Road, DBB Enterprises LLC. Move approval.
Motion second. Does that include the, you did mention the stipulations, correct?
Twenty-eight stipulations, subject to, as per the staff recommendation and the P and Z.
Have a motion second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6 to 1. My board will not tell me. Six to one, approve Ms. Wilkinson. There you go. Votes in the negative. And next item on the agenda is privileged license. We have none. Six, a formal business. A is 2014 dash 342, consideration and approval to extend benefits to all benefit eligible employees entering into a legally recognized marriage. Uh, this was tabled from, I think, sometime in, maybe November. This is sponsored by Mr. Wade Lenick.
Yes, this is to adopt the updated employee benefit eligibility policy so that it would extend benefits to married employees, whether in a traditional or same-sex marriage.
Mr. Wade Lenick.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Howard, were we gonna have any presentation by the HR Director, or no?
Not here.
Um, the proposed policy that we have before us, um, and I'll, do we have the ability to put that up on the screen for folks? I guess I'll, we don't have the ability to put it on the screen. I apologize for that. So I'll just read it. Statement of policy, the City of Smyrna believes all benefit eligible employees entering into a legal marriage, whether traditional or same-sex marriage, should have equal access to city benefits. Providing such benefits will assist the city in recruiting and retaining valuable employees. To be eligible for benefits, including health, dental, vision, and life insurance coverage, employees must provide a marriage certificate from a state or jurisdiction that recognizes same-sex marriages during annual benefit open enrollment or within 30 days of a qualifying event in order to provide benefits to spouses and dependent children, if applicable. Such marriage certificate must be legally binding in the state in which it is issued. Additionally, the married couple must be eligible to file federal income taxes jointly under the regulations of the Internal Revenue Service in effect at the time. Any personnel policies pertaining to spouses, i.e. sick leave, bereavement, Family Medical Leave Act, et cetera, shall also be in effect for employees in a legally recognized civil union, whether traditional or same-sex marriage. Employees who divorce must notify the employee benefits coordinator and provide legal documentation, i.e. a divorce decree, within 30 days of the event. So it's pretty straightforward. It simply proposes, uh, and the council will, I guess, debate and, and vote on this, that we treat all of our employees equally in the sense that if you have a marriage license, you're entitled to the benefits of a married employee, um, if that license is issued by a state that issues licenses. I don't think any of us want to try to redefine state law or national law. Uh, I don't think any of us want to try to define, uh, religious definitions of what is or isn't a marriage, um, and what a church should recognize or not recognize. You know, as it, as it says, render unto Caesar what is Caesar, and render unto God what is to God. Churches define what they do in their way, protected by the Constitution, as their right to do that. But at the same time, the state issues marriage licenses, which personally I always found kind of interesting. You're married by the church, but the state has to give you a license. Um, but that's the way things work in, in the United States. As of today, uh, my understanding is that 36 states recognize same-sex marriages, issue licenses, uh, along with the District of Columbia and several territories. The, the, the law on this and the sentiment of the public has evolved very rapidly, even in the last year, much less the last several years. Um, we've seen, um, a tremendous surge of states approving same-sex marriage and the courts upholding their rights to do so. Um, I think as our city attorney advised us in our, our meeting prior to this, uh, meeting tonight, uh, in every case where, um, the, there's been a, a legal challenge to the right of a state to issue same-sex marriage licenses, um, the courts have overturned that challenge and supported the states. Um, in Georgia, as of tonight, uh, same-sex marriage, same-sex marriages are not recognized as legal. They're not allowed to be performed in Georgia, and the state does not recognize by law marriages performed in other states, um, as they do heterosexual marriages and heterosexual, heterosexual marriage licenses. It's also our understanding from our city attorney that a, a legal challenge has recently been filed in Georgia in the north, is it the North Circuit, Mr. Cochran?
Northern.
North, northern circuit? Northern District of U.S. Federal Court, um, which addresses that very issue. And, um, I would expect the court will try to rule on that as it has in all the other cases, uh, without drawing it out. When, when would they do that? Who could say? Um, it could be a week, it could be a month, it could be a year, but I would tend to think it would be sooner than later, just because of the way the other courts have tended to act in those matters. So it's a complicated issue, and good people of good faith and good values, um, have different opinions on this, and I respect each and, and all of those opinions. Uh, even on the council, we've had spirited and, and yet respectful debate on the topic, and we've all struggled to try to understand what is the right thing to do. And for all of us, I think that's a very personal decision. And regardless of how anybody votes on this issue tonight, uh, I'm still gonna love and respect my fellow council members just as much as whether we vote the same or whether we vote different. Because again, I think good people of, of good minds and good intentions and good values can disagree on, on issues and, and yet still love and respect each other. I mean, that's the very foundation of, of the Republican former government and democracy that, that we govern ourselves by. And I find personally, it's always instructive to kind of go back to the original documents and try to go back to the basics, if you will, to help define and understand an issue. And so, you know, I go back first to the Declaration of- And so, you know, I go back first to the Declaration of Independence, which I think is one of the most marvelous documents ever produced in the history of mankind. It's so marvelous that, for folks of my generation, it's interesting to note that in 1945, Ho Chi Minh basically copied the United States Declaration of Independence verbatim and declaring independence from colonial France for Vietnam. Maybe if we had all sat down and talked, we could have understood a lot more about each other instead of losing 60,000 soldiers in a, in a long war. I don't know. But there's a very famous phrase that I think we can all probably pretty much recite from memory, which says in the opening paragraphs, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Clearly, there was no distinction made. Now, it's taken the United States several hundred years to live up to the meaning of those words in many cases. And our record has not always been exemplary and, and the way it should have been, as a nation, as a society. But those words certainly have been the model and ideal and inspiration for how we have chosen to govern ourselves since declaring independence from Great Britain. If we then go to the Constitution, and I would, I'm sure our esteemed city attorney, Mr. Cochran, is a much better constitutional scholar than I, but just looking at Article 4, Section 1, "Full faith and credit shall be given in each state to the public acts, records, and judicial proceedings of every other state." Full faith and credit shall be given in each state to the public acts, records, and judicial proceedings of every other state. And I'm just a simple guy, but to me, that says if one state passes a law that says whatever, that that is then upheld and recognized by the other states. And I think that's one of the issues that we're struggling with in this current debate. Section 2 of Article 4 says, "The citizens of each state shall be entitled to all privileges and immunities of citizens in the several states." Again, the citizens of each state shall be entitled to all privileges and immunities of citizens in the several states. Again, kind of restating in more plain language that if a state endows you with certain rights or whatever, that the other states accept and recognize those same rights. Again, that's kind of the heart of the question that's being debated in the legal community across the nation right now. Is gay marriage legal and should those have force in other states? And should the other states that have not recognized it, should they recognize it in some way? Or what is the right and proper definition? Again, I don't want to get into that whole discussion because that's way over my head. But I think the question is, do we recognize marriage licenses issued in other states, now more than two-thirds of the states, and act accordingly to treat our employees equal? I do believe it's fundamentally, for me, it gets down to a question of fairness. What, what is fair? And again, good men and women can disagree on how we interpret and perceive things, and I accept that. But is it fair to deny a city of Smyrna employee who may be gay, by whatever means, whether you believe it's by, by birth or by choice? That's really kind of irrelevant in this discussion. If that person marries legally in one of the 36 states or the District of Columbia or territories that recognizes it and brings that marriage license to the city of Smyrna, do we treat them differently than every other married employee who happens to be heterosexual and not homosexual? That's, that's an important issue for us to discuss and debate. And again, I think it's an issue about which people can differ and have different opinions, and I, I accept that. But I, I see this as an issue of fairness, of an issue of equality. I don't think married gay couples are asking for this, to be some sort of special deal. In fact, until we started having this discussion, nobody had asked us to do this. I think it's, it's a question of what do we think is the right and fair thing to be done in our city for our employees? We're not trying to redefine Georgia law. We're just trying to define how we treat our own employees. And I think back to 1964, when I was 12 years old and not at an age where I understood a lot of what was going on in the American Civil Rights Movement at the time, and certainly not of an age where I could have engaged in much meaningful participation in doing the right thing back at that time. But, you know, in 1964, in all those years in the 60s, there was a lot of drama and trauma going on in the country as our nation wrestled with, again, the question of equality of our citizens. We go back to the Declaration of Independence, 1776, all men are created equal, and yet in 1964, we're still struggling as a nation to have an equal society. And it eventually required President Kennedy submitting what became the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and that being passed by Congress. And President Kennedy, when he submitted that bill, said these words, "We are confronted primarily with a moral issue. It is as old as the scriptures, and it is as clear as the American Constitution. The heart of the question is whether all Americans are to be afforded equal rights and equal opportunities, whether we are going to treat our fellow Americans as we want to be treated." Now, 1964, he's talking about civil rights for minorities. But I think the same words apply to this case. We, we're in a situation now where the law does not treat all of our citizens, and in a more specific case, our, our employees, equally. And I think we have a chance here in the city of Smyrna to, to do the right thing. Now, again, we can all disagree about what the right thing is, and our conscience has to be our guide, and I respect the conscience of everybody in this room and everybody who's watching on TV. I think as long as you do the right thing, as your conscience defines it, you and I will never have a problem and will never argue or fight about that because I respect your right to make that determination based on your judgment, your education, your life experiences, what you know to be true in, in your life and your world. But I would submit that it's time now, even though these cases are, are moving forward in the legal system here in Georgia, for the city of Smyrna to take a step to do the right thing. I, I think we can choose to align ourselves, as people faced the choice in 1963 and 1964. I mean, back then, they could either align themselves with Governor George Wallace, who literally stood in the doorway of the schools and blocked minority children from being able to, to go to those schools and get an education. Where we can choose to align ourselves with where the law is changing and evolving towards. And that is not special rights, not extra rights, but equal rights for all of our citizens, in particular, the citizens who work for the city of Smyrna. And that is the question that we are here tonight to discuss. Do we afford our gay employees, who choose to be married, just like any other couple can choose to be married, the same benefits, rights, and protections as non-gay married employees can have? And that is the question for us to decide tonight. Your Honor, I yield.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Let me see. Would you please, you please, no, no, we're having discussion up here. Have a seat. Thank you. Mrs. Nullwich.
I think it's interesting that Councilman Lenick remarked that he thinks it's strange that you have to have a civil, well, you didn't say this correctly, but you commented on having a church marriage and also a civil marriage. I've always rather liked it. I'm a Catholic, and therefore, it was very important for me to have a sacramental marriage in the Catholic Church. However, that marriage is very different from what the state of Louisiana also required my husband and I to have, which is a marriage certificate, of course, signed by the priest who officiated the marriage and also gone through, went through the process through New Orleans Parish in the state of Louisiana. I think it's neat because, number one, not everyone should have to have a sacramental marriage or a marriage in a church because that's not what everyone wants.
Okay, hold on. I can't, there's sidebars going on.
I'm on a roll, Mayor.
I can't help it. I can't hear both these conversations. Now go.
You should always defer to my conversation.
But I'm, that's why they finally be quiet.
That's what my husband does. That said, I think it is wonderful that the state of Georgia is gracious enough to recognize my marriage license from the state of Louisiana. My children certainly appreciate it because, again, I am an aide of New Orleani, and that's very important to me, and my whole family was down there, and they kind of insisted. So we did have our big church wedding in New Orleans, and thankfully, we could come back to Georgia with our marriage certificate and be recognized. If they hadn't, we probably would have sued them, number one, because my husband's a lawyer who likes to sue governments, and number two, it would have been blatantly unconstitutional. So here we stand. Right now, we live in a nation where 70% of Americans live in a state where gay people, same-sex people can marry each other. As of October, when I did some research on this, there were 30 states plus the District of Columbia where same-sex marriages were legal. As of tomorrow, it is 36 states and the District of Columbia. It was commented earlier tonight by one of my colleagues that times were changing rapidly, and indeed, they are. I am just going to say now, because I've said a lot about this, and we've talked about the civil rights movement tonight. I always remind my family, when we drive by the Ocoquan Prison in Northern Virginia when we're going to visit the grandparents, that Ocoquan Prison is where these suffragettes were taken when they were fighting for the right to vote. It's where they were force-fed, and it's where they were tortured, and it's where they were beaten, so that y'all get to have people like me, not only voting for people like Mayor Bacon, but holding office. I also get to own property, and that is pretty stellar. I'm going to finish with something that I wrote to my colleagues earlier, earlier this year, it's actually later last year. And I'll just say what I summed up because I, I've, I've made several points about how the city of Smyrna can be a competitive employer. I've made points to my colleagues and to people in the city about why I think we have a fiduciary, fiduciary duty to supply these benefits. I've cited the example of the Veterans Administration. They're currently being sued because they do not recognize same-sex partners as beneficiaries of VA benefits, even though the federal government certainly recognizes people who want to marry filing joint. So they're in a lawsuit right now. But here's what I'm going to finish with, and that is that, "Smyrna is a wonderful city, and we are populated by remarkable people. We employ the finest staff members any city could ask for. Every day, our public safety employees put their lives on the line, and every day, they say goodbye to spouses, heterosexual and homosexual, who never know if that will be the last time they see their partner alive. Our employees deserve the very best and most respectful treatment from the elected officials who determine their benefits. Likewise, I strongly feel that our residents deserve to live in a city that tries and does its best to be on the right side of history, and who determine to act on an issue because it is the right thing to do for their employees and for their citizens, and not because their actions are mandated by the federal government." I think it's inevitable that before long, Georgia is going to join the number of states where same-sex marriage is allowed. I think it's inevitable that Georgia will recognize marriage certificates from same-sex couples who've been married in South Carolina, just like they recognize my heterosexual marriage certificate from the state of Louisiana. And I think that it's right that we make the decision tonight to go ahead and offer those benefits prior to the government saying, "You have to do this." I'm not going to be on the steps of City Hall barring anybody from coming in. I'm not going to say anything that would bar an employee who puts their life on the line to say, "You know what? Your partner isn't worthy of the same benefits that your colleagues are." I can't do that, and so that is why I support this motion.
Any other comments? Ms. Pritchett.
Put my glasses on so I can check my notes from time to time. First of all, I think it's very informative that I get to hear about the Declaration of Independence and the Civil Rights Movement and all these other issues. I want to get to the heart of the issue of what we're here about tonight. When I was elected on this council, I took an oath to do the best I could for the citizens of Smyrna. And I don't think I would be doing the best I could do for the citizens of Smyrna if I was for this issue, for a couple of reasons. State of Georgia does not recognize same-sex marriage, as we've talked about earlier this evening. GMA does not recognize state sex, same-sex marriages, which is Georgia Municipal Association, which really governs all of the cities in the state of Georgia. Cobb County, Cobb Commission, does not recognize it. But yet, we're being asked as a council to recognize it in Smyrna because some people don't want the federal government to tell them what to do. I don't think it's right for the taxpayers of Smyrna to foot the bill for something that's unconstitutional in our state. Now, you can say, "Well, it's not fair." My daughter used to say when she was very young, "Mom, that's not fair." Everything that happened, that she didn't go, didn't go her way, it wasn't fair. Well, we all know that life isn't fair. So the thing about being fair, don't want the federal government to do this, I'm not going to vote to do this until the federal government makes me do it. Because I do not think that is right for us to sit up here and decide this for citizens when we are employees of the state. So I will not be supporting this, this motion. But one other thing I want to say, you talk about retaining and keeping and recruiting great employees. I've been on this council for a good, long time. We don't lose employees because of benefits. We lose employee, employees for different reasons. People move. I have always been an advocate of our employees, to make sure that we treat them right, to make sure that they get good pay, to make sure that they get great benefits, and they do. So I will not be voting for this. I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I'm going to be very short. I'm, I'm not a long speaker, but, and, and I guess I'm old-fashioned. And maybe I was elected by a group of people that was old-fashioned values, just like I am. But I just can't sit up here and vote and force the people of Smyrna, as little money as it's going to cost us if we did this. I, I can't force the citizens of Smyrna to use any, any taxpayer money to do something that goes against the state law. And, you know, by recognizing the same-sex marriage as, as offering benefits to those, it, it's going to cost the city very little money. But I can't force that on the people in Ward 4 and throughout the city of Smyrna. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Any other comments? Ms. Wilkinson.
You know, I've struggled with this for, for several months now while we've been talking about it and about the cost to the taxpayers, and we've looked into that, and it doesn't seem like it's going to be very little cost as far as a benefit to the taxpayers for the, for the, for the insurance. But where I think that it could cost the taxpayers are in any lawsuits that might occur if they, if the employee did have a legally recognized marriage in another state. And I also feel that this is about equal rights for all employees, and, and it's really not about my personal feelings or my personal beliefs, but it's just equal rights and equal benefits for all the employees. And so I plan to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Phil.
Ms. Blitstein, go.
I was just going to, Your Honor, make one correction to what I read earlier. The electronic copy of our proposed policy was amended tonight in a paper copy, and I used the word "civil union," and the word actually is "marriage." The sentence in the third paragraph would read, "Any personnel policies pertaining to spouses, i.e. sick leave, bereavement, FMLA, et cetera, shall also be in effect for employees in a legally recognized marriage, whether traditional or same-sex marriage." So when I make my motion, I just want to be clear, that would be the document and how it would read.
Mr. Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my colleagues, this is an issue we wouldn't normally be discussing. To my colleagues, this is an issue we wouldn't normally be discussing. We're not a panel of judges. We're not looking out into the community and weighing or measuring morality. We're policymakers at the local government level, dealing with local issues. You expect us to wisely be shepherds and stewards of your tax dollars to do the basic blocking and tackling that a city is required to do. That's to make sure the roads are paved, clear, operational, lights, sidewalks, the water's running, the waste is taken away, and provide other basic services. So it's challenging for some of us to even be in this discussion and having this debate. That being said, as you offer to any employee a benefit and not offer it to others is inherently discriminatory by definition. This is a challenging issue for anyone who has to wrestle with it on moral grounds, but we're not looking at it from that perspective as a council. This is a policy issue relative to treatment of employees on an equal basis. Legal marriage, that's in the defined term. You have to be legally married, recognized by some jurisdiction in America as legally married. That inherently takes upon significant responsibility, challenge, and obligation. One of them is the filing of your IRS tax returns. It's treated differently in some places, but the recognition has to be done so fiscally to the government at some level. Federal government has already dealt with some of these issues, and as has been pointed out, the court system is in process of dealing with most of the remainder of the issues, and doing so in rapid fashion. The case mentioned was in the Northern District of the 11th Circuit. It's proceeding rapidly and expected, within the year, to be adjudicated, and likely to be, as the other states have done in the other circuits, to roll that in favor of allowing this benefit for all. Some people ask the separation of church and state argument to be considered. I am looking at it as we, as policymakers, looking at how we treat our employees on an equal basis, plain and simple. I can't discriminate against one employee over the other. Speaking of marriage, how many of you are aware of the divorce rate in America? It's at 50%. The term "marriage" has taken a different meaning in our society than it once had. We all recognize that. Speaking from a standpoint of legal minds, I have a constituent who has spent a good chunk of his life in the law as an attorney and a judge. I won't mention him, obviously, but he did say, "This is a legal issue," and I'm sure the council's been advised of what would happen if it did not approve the benefits package, and we, as a city, then logically should approve this benefit. I also have a constituent, who's a retired minister of my faith, Methodist, who advised to support this as well. And he did so quoting some scripture and referring to some aspects of our mutual faith. And he asked the question, "What did Jesus say about homosexuality?" And the fact of the matter is, quote, "As a Christian, what does Jesus have to say about homosexuality? Nothing. He said to love everyone." Behaviors are frowned upon all throughout the Bible, but they're among us are only sinners, as Shel reminds us. There was only one perfect person, and we recently celebrated his birth, and soon will celebrate his resurrection. He spent his life teaching us to love one another. And when two people take the time, energy, and effort to commit to one another in a bond of marriage, who are we to judge them? I think we were reminded in the scriptures, and I took an oath to uphold the Constitution on this book. And this book speaks of compassion, of love, of forgiving, and inclusion. And when Thomas Jefferson wrote the words in the Declaration of Independence, this was sitting on his table, open, as he referred to it, on a constant basis. I believe the city of Smyrna is a progressive city. I moved here on purpose, by choice. I didn't have the privilege of growing up here. But I live here now, I'm rearing my sons here, and I want my family to look forward and recognize what may be recognized by the courts soon in formality, but that we are a welcoming city, who speaks to each one of us as being somebody important, and if they choose someone in their lives to be important enough to marry, then I, as a policymaker, feel compelled to make sure every employee of the city is treated equally. I didn't swear to uphold the Bible by holding the Constitution. I held the Bible and swore to uphold the Constitution. I'll be voting yes on this measure.
Any other comments, anyone? Before you make your motion, oh, Ms. Bluestein, I'm sorry.
You know, I am sure every one of you has a compelling reason why you're here, either for, against, or whatever. And we've all, we've heard this whole lineup of people talk about their compelling reasons or not compelling reasons. The bottom line is, you have to vote your conscience. And that's what I'm going to try to do, is to vote my conscience. I don't feel pro or con or whatever on this issue, you know? So I hope that it comes out the way it should.
Thank you.
That was a pretty good comment, Ms. Bluestein. It was short and to the point. I'm not going to sit up here and take 30 minutes to recite the Constitution or, you know, read the, tell you, read the Bible. And the problem that I see that we have with this, and prior to this meeting, is our city attorney gave us some good advice, which I told him we probably wouldn't take, because he gives us good advice, and his advice, which is, "Take a deep breath. There is a pending lawsuit. Our state does not recognize same-sex marriages." And I don't know that we've gotten a straight answer yet out, and I don't know if there's a straight answer, that, that does state law dictate to us what we can do in a city. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, this suit will be settled soon, and from what I'm hearing from all the other attorneys on council is that it will probably be thrown out, and that the state will have to recognize same-sex marriages. Just puts us in a hard position. I support folks that same-sex marriages. I don't have a problem with that at all, if that's what you want, if that's what makes you happy, I'm all for that 100%. This will be decided somewhere in the next few weeks, or maybe a couple of months or something, and then they will dictate to us what we have to do. It's sort of amazing sometimes, is that sometimes we pick and choose what we want the state to tell us to do and what their laws are versus what our laws are. So, but in any case, Mr. Lenika, this was an issue that you brought forward, and I'm turning it back over to you. Kay Bolick, our HR director, is not here. But, Mr. Lenika, this is your sponsorship, so go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I appreciate all the comments and feelings, and respect everybody who has feelings one way or the other, whether you agree or disagree with me or anyone else up here, because it is a complicated issue. And just by our discussion and debate, you can tell that this issue has been one that has occupied our mind, and people have given a lot of thought to, and everybody wants to do the right thing. And, you know, God bless our council. I mean, I wouldn't want to serve with a group that was trying to serve someone else's interests or, you know, being bought and paid under the table to do X, Y, or Z. I do believe this council has the integrity to always try to do what they think is right. And it's a blessing for our city to be governed by folks of that kind. Having said all that, the issue before us is this proposed policy on benefit eligibility. I've read the policy with the one correction from my first reading, and I will move at this time that we adopt item 2014-342, that we approve extending benefits to benefit-eligible employees entering into a legally-recognized marriage.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 5 to 2, with Ms. Pritchett and Mr. Welch voting in the negative. Item number B, under Form of Business, is 2015-01, approval of the mayor's appointment of Donald Wilkins to the Parks and Recreation Board. This board member has a two-year term that expires December 2016. Do you have anything to add to that? She's a Smyrna resident, living in Ward 7, been very involved in athletics here with her children, so I'd like for someone to make that motion.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. In discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. All right, that's approved 7 to 0. Item C, 2015-02, approve the reappointment of Joel Powell to the Planning and Zoning Board, term that expires 12/31/2016, is actually my appointment.
Move approval.
Motion and a second. Reappoint Joel Powell. I want to thank him for the good job he's done. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7 to 0. Item D, 2015-03, approve the reappointment of the DDA Downtown Development Authority members, as follows, Kevin Draw, Jim Delmer, Kimberly Yanjimi, Jason Lee, Doug Stoner, Eric Cash, Larry Freeman, for a full term that expires 2015. I gotta get a motion first.
Your Honor, I move to approve the DDA members.
You got a motion and a second. Ms. Cochran, it's just crazy. Should my name be on there?
You, are you talking about, well, yours should be on for the chairman.
Or is it, well?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, you would, you could just ask for somebody. You could make the appointment, ask for somebody to make a motion.
Yeah, that's correct. We should have, we're supposed to do this every April. So this goes through April 15th, we'll have to do it again in April.
I'm certainly willing to amend my motion to add you, Your Honor, as a member, if that's appropriate. My recollection is that the ordinances establishing the DDA name you as mayor specifically as the chairman and ex officio member.
Yeah, and I misunderstood your question, Max. That's right. Yeah, you're automatically a member by code.
All right, we got a motion and a second to reappoint the members that I just mentioned. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7 to 0. Item E, 2015-04, approve the reappointment of Ward 4 Planning and Zoning Board member, Michael Seagrave, for a two-year term that expires December 2016. Mr. Welch? A motion and a second by Ms. Nolowich. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7 to 0, Michael Seagrave does an outstanding job also. 2015-05, approve Ward 1 appointment, Derek Norton, to keep Smyrna Beautiful Board for a two-year term that expires 12/31/2016. Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Are we having technical difficulty? Yep, here we go. One more. Approve 7 to 0. Item G, CON 2015-0, approve of the city of Smyrna to continue as a member of the Cobb County CDBG program and authorize the mayor to sign the 2015 subrecipient agreement documents. You want to add anything to that, Mr. Tony?
Yes, every year, the city of Smyrna signs this subrecipient agreement with Cobb County CDBG. This 2015 subrecipient agreement authorizes Cobb County to continue the administration of the funds and reporting to HUD on behalf of the city.
Okay. Ms. Nolowich?
I move to approve item 6G, that is, CON 2015-01, which is approval for the city of Smyrna to continue as a member of the Cobb County CDBG program and authorize the mayor to sign the 2015 subrecipient agreement documents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. All those in favor of the motion, that's quick, 7 to 0. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Howard, you please read the consent agenda for council's approval.
Yes, we have 2015-06, approval of the December 15, 2014 mayor and council meeting minutes. 2015-07, award RFP 15-016, Rose Garden Park parking lot resurfacing for $20,928.05 to the lowest bidder Baldwin Paving Company, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item 2015-08, award RFP 15-021 for the Smyrna Automated Traffic Management System to the lowest bidder World Fiber Technologies for $1,602,010.89, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item 2015-09, award RFP 15-022, bridge rehabilitations to the lowest bidder Ace Construction for $383,826, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item 2015-10, approval to allow road closures for the Spooktacular Chase for Vision Rehabilitation Services of Georgia, Inc., on October 17, 2015, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And item 2015-11, approval of 11K run event for Zone 5 and multi-jurisdictions on November 14, 2015, to begin at 8:00 a.m. in Smyrna, at the roundabout for approximately 500 runners to end at 11:00 a.m. in Cobb County.
Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Clear the screen.
It's approved 7 to 0. Back in the old days, when we didn't have technology, you'd just raise your hand, it was a lot quicker. And number 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've said enough for the evening. Thank you.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein?
I do not have a report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Terry Nolowich?
I've said about everything else that I'm going to say tonight, with that I yield.
I'll second that. Mr. Corky Welch.
No comments.
Terry.
With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
No, I have no reports tonight, with that I yield.
Mr. Wade Lenika?
You knew your luck wouldn't last.
Yeah. Kiss that goodbye.
Just a couple of quick things to report. I met just before Christmas with the Oak Ridge Estates Homeowners Association here at City Hall, had a good meeting. It was good to see those folks, appreciated them turning out and, you know, able to answer questions and talk about some of the things going on in the city of Smyrna, and that was, that was great. I also want to congratulate Ward 6 resident, and obviously Smyrna resident, Ann Harris, on being sworn in. on being sworn in as Superior Court Judge representing Cobb County. We're very proud of her. It's great to have a Smyrna judge back on the bench, as we've had in the past with Ken Nixon and others, and I believe Ann Harris is going to do a great job. She's been a great district attorney and on that staff, and she's going to do a great job as a judge, so congratulate her and, you know, hopefully I'll never have to see her in a professional capacity. Got a number of meetings coming up later in January, but I guess the last thing I would announce is, kind of backed by popular request, this Saturday at 12 noon in front of Emory Adventist Hospital, we'll have a second veterans' rally to support the VA choosing the Emory Adventist campus as a site for a future VA medical clinic. So the public's invited. You're welcome to come out, 12 noon Saturday, this Saturday, which is January, let me double check my calendar, 10th. You know, if you have an interest and want to participate, we'd love to see you there. With that, Your Honor, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. From the fire department, I just want to remind you, it's winter time, it's going to get really cold on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Temps will be sub-freezing, and a lot of families use space heaters. I caution you to be very careful with those. We don't need any fires within the homes in Smyrna. Our department can help you. If you have heating issues, you have need, there are supplemental programs available to provide you some support. Either contact your church or the fire department or a local charity to help you with that. Also, in preparation for Smyrna's emergency management's Prepare-A-Thon coming up in springtime, the committee is about to begin its work again. Stay tuned for more about that. Police Department, we had an active shooter drill at Belmont Hills Elementary today. This is to allow our team of law enforcement officials to prepare for the unlikely event that might happen. Some people might have been alarmed to see an awful lot of activity, but just to let you know, it was a drill, it was designed to help train our team, and we want to make sure, should that unlikely event happen, that our guys and gals are ready to be familiar with the space that they'll be working in and how to deal with any of those needed police procedures. Also, want to wish Chief Lee a speedy recovery. He had some minor surgery. He'll be back to work very shortly. Finally, I want to also congratulate Ann Harris and our other Smyrna resident, Susan Thayer, who, having spent arduous campaigns and now being sworn in, I tell them that you're being sworn in, be prepared hereafter to be sworn at in those public positions. It's an opportunity for Smyrna to continue its reach, both at the school board and in the courts, and I appreciate their public service and acknowledge the Smyrna base that they emanate from. Also, finally, I know that, Mr. Mayor, you're going to mention something about the city administrator search. I just wanted to get that on the radar, and thank you for attention to that detail to help us find the next leader of the staff of the city. And with that, one last thing. If you did not get my newsletter last week, my year-end report, you may contact me, ronfennel@me.com, or go to the website and use my email address there. And just as an aside, I put a poll in that, the previous controversial issue, it was a two-thirds, one-third supportive poll response from the constituents, and I was amazed at the commentary and the thoughtful nature with which both sides articulated their viewpoint, and I appreciate that input. It's my duty, I think, to ask my constituents how we can best serve them, and I got a lot of responses, and I'm greatly appreciative of that. With that, Mr. Mayor, a yield.
Our acting city administrator, Ms. Howard, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Our city attorney, who gave us some warnings earlier that we didn't pay attention to anything. Terry Graham, our city clerk. Just what Ron was mentioning, we continue and we have extended our search for a city administrator for 30 days. We're thinking over the holidays, it may have slowed down the number of applicants. I think we've got close to 70. It's close. So it's still posted, so. With that, I'm going to do the citizens' input before we do the show call hearing. I'll ask that, so we're going to move that up. Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail, his topic is comments.
It's working.
I stood up earlier. There were people here that would have liked to have made some comments before the vote was taken. I think, number one, that would have been, since the word "fair" has been used a lot here tonight. This is such an emotional issue that was here tonight, that the people should have been acknowledged that we're in the audience. That's part of open government. The city failed on that part. I applaud the two people that voted against this issue. I hear this comment about the Bill of Rights. Well, the Bible goes back a lot further than that, and that's crystal clear. I hear a lot about, in the future, Georgia's going to become one that approves it. Until it does, it hasn't happened. And again, it's still illegal here. The term is, what happened tonight with the five people that voted in front of me? This is forced law that you're making up tonight. Georgia hasn't recognized it. And for us to be forced by five people, why didn't this council have a referendum and see what the majority of Smyrna did? And you wonder why every election, the turnouts are low. The people don't feel part of the decision-making. This is our money. We should have had a referendum on this. Again, we could have had a referendum in the last election. You didn't do it. So five people have determined how our money's being spent without us being involved in our say. And this is a sad scenario. We had no town hall meeting with eight million on the Smyrna Commons, lost there. Hickory Lakes, 16 million, no town hall meeting there. We had one for Concord Road after it was finalized, and you wonder why people don't care or feel part of the city. But this issue tonight should have been not decided by five people. To say 36 states have approved it, and I question the 70% that are in states that approve it, that still leaves, let's say, is that 14, 16 states that still haven't approved it. Until they do, the law is what it is. And to say three weeks away or a couple months is speculating. We do not speculate on what's on the books now. Five people up here made a mistake tonight, and I'm looking forward to the campaigning for the election, November 3, for people who are running against those people that approved this tonight. I'm appalled by this, and many other people are too. They had no say in it. Thank you.
Howard Martin.
I got to say one thing real quick.
Hold on, you can say one when we get there.
We had public comment on this.
I was going to address that one after I let everybody say their piece. Howard Martin, 3435 Lee Street. Okay. I still want to call his name. His name's here, he might be out in the lobby. Haywood Savage, I know he spoke earlier. I don't know if he still wants to speak, Haywood, you had put down. Concord Road, you good? Okay. Timothy Rice Checker, is that it?
Big Sacker.
Boy, I messed that one up.
I just launched a column for dinner.
Timothy, 1115 Pounder Drive, comments or his topic?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch, I want to compliment you guys all, number one, on this hard decision on same-sex benefits. One of the problems I have that, and was not brought up, if you follow the lawsuits that have gone through concerning this, there's now one going to, headed to the Supreme Court out of Michigan, I think it's from Michigan, Ohio, and Tennessee, stating that if a state has not recognized same-sex marriage, they cannot legally, the court's system cannot legally, what do you say, morality to that state?
I just like morality.
Yeah, and that's one of the concerns I have. I mean, I am more for if the city of Smyrna, I would have rather seen the city of Smyrna say, if they want to, if you're in a gay marriage, if you want to pay for those added benefits, you can add it on to our system. But I, as a Christian, do not agree with the fact that same-sex marriage. That's basically what I had to say. I mean, I just wanted to put my two cents in, and thank you very much for all your services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emery Leonard.
I'm going to pass.
You good? Okay. Those are all the folks that signed up for public comment. And I will say this, we did have public comment on this issue probably back in, was it November or was it October?
It was effective.
And one of the reasons that we sort of delayed it, as I remember, was so that the council could get additional feedback from their constituents. Penity was not listed as a public hearing agenda item. This agenda's been posted several days since last week. It's under formal business, and there's no public comment during the formal business. But it's not like we just didn't listen. Folks were elected to these positions every four years, and if you have a referendum on everything, it would slow the process down, probably not any more than the comments that were discussed tonight, but you have a council that's elected by the people. And if we had referendums for every single thing, there would really be no reason to have elected officials. I hope I didn't plant a seed that somebody thinks is a good idea, but it would take a little bit longer, so. That concludes the portion of our agenda. We have a show call's hearing. A 2015-12, appeal of a denial of application for taxi permit for Wilmer F. Carbonello Lezu, is that him? Is he here? I'll ask if he's here. If not, I will, I'm going to suggest that we entertain a motion to deny the...
So moved.
Wait, 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 before we do it, let's get some advice from our attorney that we probably won't take.
Possibly table.
Can we vote?
Yeah, you can do that. You can dismiss it for want of prosecution.
Okay.
Move to dismiss for want of prosecution.
Motion and a second. Wait a minute. He did it again, didn't he?
You asked me to do it.
Oh, that's right. I thought y'all were joking, okay.
I want to be on her good side from now on.
This is foggy right now. Have motion and a second to deny. And what this was for the public to know is, someone had applied for a permit to drive a taxi, and that's considered a previous license, and he was denied that because he had some issues with some things that were not acceptable in the application, so. And he has a right to appeal it to us, he or she does. Have a motion and a second to deny. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Come on. Four to two, five to two, and the nays are... Susan Wade, okay. All right. That's so, motion denies, approved five to two with Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Lenika post. Any other business to be brought before this body? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned at pretty close to 9:15, looks like.